Call the Apache Junction work session order. Roll call.
Mayor Sertie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yep, here.
House Member Barker?
Here.
House Member Evans?
Here.
House Member Rizzi?
Present.
House Member Strubow?
Here.
House Member Waldron?
Here.
All members present, you have a quorum, Your Honor.
Presentation on the year in review for the inaugural year of Flatiron Community Park and future plans. And can we mix the two once we get started? We'll just come back to that.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Liz Langenbach, Parks and Recreation Director. I just want to apologize in advance to my colleagues in the audience who are here for the budget and have to go through my two presentations first. I'll try to be brief. Alright, so about this time last year, we were opening up our new downtown park and we thought it would be a great time to come back and just share with you kind of what has been accomplished there. Definitely wanted just to reiterate, especially with those departments that are here in the room, that this has definitely been a city, all department, hands-on-deck kind of project. We've had so much input and help from all of our city departments and I definitely appreciate that. Oh, this is not going to work. Okay. So in this, we're just going to talk quickly about park usage, share with you some of the activities and events that we've done over the last year, a brief review of just some, a few lessons learned, and then the future plans for the park. So our general park usage, we don't keep park numbers on our just everyday usage. We're not out there, obviously, to be able to keep track of that, but we're very surprised to see. We knew that we would get some splash pad users in the daytime and evenings. There's almost no time that you can drive by that there aren't one or two people, and of all ages, enjoying the splash pads. So we were real excited about that. Dogs on leashes, so we don't have an off-leash dog park yet, but we were, again, amazed at how many dogs and people are coming to that park to walk their dogs around and enjoy the different amenities. That has been really great. The usual picnicking, we have lots of people that enjoy their breakfast or their lunch at the park, and then also walking and fitness during their day. So those are some of the general passive uses of the park. In addition, over 10,000 individuals visited Flatiron for a scheduled event or activity this year. And that's just kind of a rough estimate, so it could be a little bit more than that, I'm sure. We tried to look at some of the different things that were scheduled there and give our best guess on some of these events. One, big areas under facility, well, it's a small area right now, but our facility rentals. We do reserve the Ramadas and some of that, a little bit of grass area for birthday parties and family picnics. That's very minimal right now. We kind of just started that midway through the year. As well as, it is available for nonprofits-sponsored small events, so they can reserve a small portion of the park. Most of those don't close down the entire park. They're there to rent a certain area. They can utilize our current fees and our, we have fees that fit the park just very nicely already in our current structure for those smaller things. Currently, only individuals and not-for-profit agencies can reserve facilities. We'll talk in a little bit that one of the things that hopefully will be on the work plan for this coming up year or else in the fall will be talking about commercial use of that facility, and we'll talk about that in a minute. So to kind of give you a little rundown on some of the activities, the Parks and Rec activities that we've done this year, we had 25 free drop-in fitness classes. They were, depending on what they were and the time of day, they were anywhere from being very popular to semi-popular. We had several art, or we had a big Art in the Park event where we had 50 kids came out and we had different art stations, and this is one of the pictures from that event. We do a monthly read-and-rec with the AJ Public Library, and that's a great event where we highlight a special book or author or type a book, and then there's arts and crafts activities, there's the reading activities, and that's in partnership with the library at the park. Lastly, we started this spring a downtown running and walking series for this year. We partnered with the AJS Athletics Program, trying to figure out a way to get people to want to come down, and usually walking or running for a cause is what attracts them, not just the fitness itself. So we started a pilot program with them for the spring, but we'll be expanding that to the other schools in our community. We've already talked with Imagine Prep, and we'll be reaching out to Apache Trail on looking to partner with them for the other months during the year. And then that leads into our Parks and Rec-related events, so the events that are put on by Parks and Recreation. So as we had talked about about a year ago, we really didn't budget to add a whole bunch of new events down at the park. And so the plan was to move some of our current events there that were happening in other parks. That didn't require a whole lot of money, or to partner with other individuals on bringing some different events down there. So you can kind of look through here of some of the different events that we did. The grand opening was a great success. We moved our Halloween festival down to the park and definitely can see how we could just grow that in a lot of different ways. Our holiday event and light parade kicked off down at the park and had wonderful space down there for all of our booths and all of our different activities that happened down there, but you can kind of see some of the different things that we did for Parks and Rec events. And then here's just a few pictures. This was at our grand opening, the lines for our gerbil ball races, those were very popular. The dancers at our grand opening and movie night. This event is from the Flatiron Holiday Event, and food trucks that we had at that event. A picture from our fitness in the park, this one is yoga for everyone. A great view of the superstitions. It's a beautiful day to be able to do yoga. They do some very interesting dance yoga and other things that I personally haven't tried yet, but sound like some good things that we'll be expanding on next year. Those were some of the Parks and Rec departmental events. We also were able to move one of our major civic events this year, so Festival of the Superstitions, move from the Chamber Dirt Lot over to Flatiron Park. Can I just, can you read over that for me, please, Mr. Stern? It's hard for me to even see. Thank you. So, you know, everybody was concerned. It doesn't look like a big park from certain parts, depending on where you're at. It doesn't seem that big, and it doesn't seem that big on paper. But when you're out there, it's actually pretty big, and there's still a lot of green space left and a lot of room for growth. So Festival of the Superstitions was really the first major event that we had down there. Halloween was slightly, was the weekend before that, but they had the Veterans Tribute down there overlooking the superstitions. Just a beautiful location for that, so we were really happy to be able to accommodate that there. Additionally, we did a pilot event this year, and just to kind of explain a little of that history, Superstition Blues Brews and Arts Festival had kind of outgrown, so their first year they came to Apache Junction, they just outgrew their location. They couldn't fit there. And so they had, they and the Chamber of Commerce had talked with us early on, right when we'd opened the park, about us looking at piloting event, and we were looking for an event to try out that Parks and Recreation could host, that we could get somebody to help us with so we didn't have to pay any money for it, because we didn't have any extra money, but to really look at how working with an event promoter might, what that would look like, and if we could attract people, and to give it just kind of a little, a little test. So this is a Superstition Blues Brews and Arts Festival. We had this in March, and it's amazing. So this is kind of early in the, in the day. There's still a lot of space up here. As we kind of tried to take pictures later on, I came a couple hours into it and it was just packed. There was room for a few blankets and really a fantastic event. The promoter that we worked with has done several things here locally, did a really nice job, and I think we learned a lot about the event. The Chamber learned a lot. I think it was a great, I heard that it was their best moneymaker for the scholarships that they do for our community, and I think, again, that's one of the major goals of, we want to bring people down to the downtown area eventually when we look at commercial fees and things like that. We want to bring in some extra revenue. But if we're not able to bring in some extra revenue, we want to make sure that the revenue that is generated is, you know, given locally here. And so they, I think they contributed something like $10,000 they made in this event for scholarships that they give to our three high schools in the community, so that was pretty cool. So lots of room to grow. We just met with them recently. I heard the final number was around 1,800 that showed up. 3,300 could fit on the grass if there were no booths or anything, so there's still some room to grow and worked very closely with a lot of different departments to make that event happen. So lessons learned. Wanted just to mention overseeding. It does, overseeding that grass. So the grass is beautiful, but in order for it to be beautiful year-round, we do have to overseed for about a month. End of September, end of, to the end of October is what we shot for, so that way we could be opened back up in time for our cooler weather. So we kind of looked to see all the golf courses, what was the earliest that they started their overseeding, and we chose that as our test run. We usually try to just do the month of October. But it's really reliant on weather and the temperatures, and so it's really a hit-or-miss thing, and I think it went really well this year. Nick and the whole crew really kept an eye on it so that we could have a beautiful facility for, as a backdrop to so many of the events that we're having in the fall. Right now, we are currently wrapping up the transition period from our winter rye that was planted in the fall. It's going to be transitioning now to the summer Bermuda. So again, I think I've mentioned this, every time we talk about Flatiron and grass, is that know that there will be times when it's a little brown or a little yellow. It's transitioning. Our guys are very, very well, very knowledgeable on the whole subject, and definitely they're on it. So I think it's, we've heard, we heard at Superstition Blues and Brews, people thought it was fake grass when they got there until they touched it, and so I think that was really cool. Splash pad challenges, we had, you know, if you followed us on Facebook, a few times over the summer, in-ground activation button. Huh, we all said whenever we saw it, the day we saw it, why is that button on the ground, kind of thing. Mesa's new one has something, one of the ones I just went to had it on the ground, one of them had it on a little bollard. So we have a backup button now. We've really worked through that struggle. Nick and Dave have been on that one. But in addition, the manufacturer is working on a new, I guess, new gizmo for putting in the ground that is more water-resistant, and they'll be rolling that out to us here soon as well. So we really haven't had too many major issues of it, but it's not what should happen with a brand-new park. So that's something we've worked through. And then bees was another huge thing. You know, our pool is so big and wa, it doesn't attract that kind of thing. It's generally those areas where there's dry and a little bit of water hanging around, you get bees. And so we've tried a lot of different things, worked with a lot of our colleagues from Mesa and the City of Peoria and Gilbert to kind of try a few of the things that they're doing, and I think we're on it right now, but it, that will definitely be another one that we're kind of balancing here and there. And there are people who are for the bees and not displacing them or causing harm to them, and others that are for the people and them not getting stung by bees. So we've tried to really find solutions that are respectful to both opinions. Lastly is unrealized fears, and I'll say they're unrealized, but they're things that we've got to keep working on. That if we don't stay on them, they can become true realities at our park. So homeless and transit issue, that's what I heard all the time, is that it, there's just going to be, just be tons of people just laying around there and doing all kinds of stuff that we didn't want because of the Rangers and the Police Department assisting and enforcing the city code that we have. And really, I think in a kind way and in trying to, you know, make sure that if people are there, you know, doing what they're supposed to do, they can stay. If they're not following the rules, then they have to move on their way. So I think we've done a good job of that. We've really educated the public that if you see something or somebody, let us know so that we can do something about it. So see something, say something, and that's the only way we can, we can take care of it. Parking, we partnered with some nearby landowners as well as our wonderful Public Works Director who is here, who jumped in and helped us to basically blade out some overflow parking areas. Larry Kirch likes to call it scorched earth, and I think that is either, I don't know if that's positive or negative, but for our events, it's very positive. We haven't had any of the parking issues that everybody was really worried we would have. We've had plenty with those two overflow parking areas, and we've worked very hard with the nearby businesses to put up signage and to help them manage the parking that they need for their customers. So we feel that's been very successful. I want to point out, though, that we do seek to avoid road closures as much as possible. There's ones that are already there. Veterans Day, Lost Veterans Days Parade, you know, so there's a couple of things that are already there that we're not going to change, but we want to try to keep the road open for those businesses as much as possible or have a solution, and having that bladed area back behind where the hardware stores and everything has created another way for folks to get into those businesses' parking lots if we were to close down North Apache Trail temporarily. So again, that's just been kind of our administrative practice. And then lastly, I know we heard a lot that because we were next to the medical marijuana establishment, that we were going to have all kinds of problems with drugs, or that people would be taking their drugs over to the park right from there. Has not been a reality. That is not something that has happened, and I would say that I felt Nature's Wonder was a wonderful partner in this. They have security, and anytime we have an event, they hire additional security to be in their area to make sure that there isn't even the slightest doubt that people are doing what they need to be doing, and they've definitely been very supportive of Festival of the Superstitions and coming to many of the merchants' meetings that we had to offer ideas and suggestions, and also just to be an advocate for having these events in the downtown area. So doesn't mean that there couldn't, that any of these couldn't become problems at some point in time, but I think our partnership with the Police Department, having a strong Park Ranger program, and then our community proactively reaching out to us in the Parks and Rec Department has really helped us to kind of keep a good handle on that. Future plans, so for programming, some of the new Parks and Rec events that we will be seeking partners for this coming up year, we are adding monthly movies in the park. We are purchasing our own movie screen, which will be a good investment for us because we're spending a lot of money to rent it for three or four events. If we own it and can train our staff, then we can have more events and won't, once, you know, we'll pretty much pay for that in our first four or five events this coming up year. So we're able to get that out of, do that out of this year's budget, so next year our plan is to be adding monthly movie events and also use it for many of our other programs in our facilities. We're looking at expanding our downtown running and walking series. We have a partner right now, Lost Asha Marathon, supported that event. They're giving us $2,000 to be able, so that the city has no cost for those. They're very small, about 50 people running and walking in the downtown area. It's been very successful in our pilot program. And then some of the other things that we are working on with various departments, Taste of AJ event that would be hosted down there, a hot air balloon, you know, so that's with Economic Development. Hot Air Balloon Event, we have visited with folks. We've done a few little pilot things, as you can see here, with having hot air glow events at some of our events. But we actually had a couple of vendors come down and look at all of our park facilities and assess what could be done. What does our space allow? And so if we were able to find the appropriate corporate partners and some of the other donors, we will be looking at trying to do an event down at Flatiron. It will be more along the lines of a glow event. You need lots and lots of space for something beyond that, but there's some really cool ones that we can do, and it, we just think that that's our next step as we look at what can we be doing on BLM land that might allow us to be able to do something a little bit more exciting. Also, food truck event. So our promise to a lot of the merchants in our area was that we weren't going to have food truck events every single Friday and detract from the restaurants that are down there. If other folks want to do that, and if there's other places, they can do that. But we definitely do want to have several food trucks at all of our events that we have, and we are going to look at having a food truck event, anything we have done that is, has a lot of events. We've invited the downtown, the adjacent restaurants to see if they wanted to have a booth. They wanted to kind of share their food at our event. That, they have not done that yet, but a lot of them, you know, there's a varying degree of support, and so we've been, tried to, tried to be a little bit sympathetic to that, but we will definitely be having a one-time, a big food truck event that we're working on for next spring. And then lastly, in the programming area, is that right now, commercial usage is not allowed of any of our facilities. It's always just been sort of nonprofits, individuals can reserve it, so it's not supposed to be for profit purposes. But we had been asked to look at, we've done a market study and started sharing with our Parks and Rec Commission what all the other cities are doing, and there's definitely that trend is that, yes, there's, they're opening it up so that commercial usage can happen to the facilities, but it would cost the, you know, so all the expenses would cost and would be rolled into that, and so we'll be bringing that to you at a, at a future date at some point in time that you direct us to do so, and just wanted to let you know that that's on the radar as we move forward. And then lastly, just wanted to tell you the future plans for development. So our desert restoration area, so this is that little area on the north end of the park. We did, if you've been down there recently, you'll see all the little paths and all the rock lining that was done. So J2 Design actually came in, so they're the ones who did our park. They designed our park. They're currently working on the Active Transportation Plan with the city, and they did a volunteer project with us that involved all of our youth, various youth groups in the community, and they built the paths on that north end. We started that. It was a much bigger project that all of us really thought it was, and so our community service workers that the courts manage finished that up for us, and they did an amazing job. We will be partnering with the CDC, and the Friends of AJ will be seeking donations to fabricate benches in that area as well as adding signage and planters, so that'll be kind of the next little mini donation projects that we'll have going on at Prospector Park. And then lastly, developing, I just wanted to remind everybody what is in future phases. I keep hearing about the future, that this is just phase one. It is, but I want to mention that phase one is pretty much almost everything. Phase two, or three, or whatever is going to happen in the future entails this east Ramada and the sidewalk that, all the cement that goes right here. That's like in the $100,000 range is the average of what, we did go out for, we added that to our bid whenever we went out for the Flatiron Park, and so when you add up everybody's averages, it's about that. And that's probably about right. When it was lumped into this whole project, we had people all over the place for it. So we're thinking that's probably about right. That's around the estimates of J2. The Central Plaza is all of this, and it doesn't seem like a lot, but it's really thick cement that will help us to be able to expand all of, to get our booths off of the grass, to get more food trucks in, and that way for an event, we can use all of the great lawn for seating, and that'll be really important as some of our events grows. It also includes a little bit of seating and some other built, cement benches that are built into there, and so that part is roughly $45,000 in their estimate. Finally, it's not on this plan anymore, just because this is what we were going out for bid on, but the observation deck, I know that's been mentioned many times, and I just wanted to remind everybody that that is like almost the total amount of this park. And so while it is a really neat feature, you know, there's just so many other priorities in our community. You know, we hear about dog parks all the time and about, you know, expanding our BLM, what we have and what we're able to do out there. And so I just want to mention that. It will certainly be discussed as we, we move into general plan and some of our future planning, but the reality, unless we had somebody who came in with a million dollars, it's probably not happening right away. And that's just my guess, so if you all have any other ideas, I'm sure we're happy to think into them. And then that's all that I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can we have the lights for the questions? Get our eyes undilated. I have some observations. Anybody want to go first, though?
She answered all my questions I had.
Yay. What? That's amazing.
I've been trying to think of something.
I know. Okay. I didn't give it to you in advance.
I just, and some of these I've talked to you about as they were happening. One is the, the first event we had there, we had, on the green area, we had the tents and whatever right out in there. And then for the Blues Festival, it was so much nicer to have everybody on the edge because you could stay at one end and look across and see what's there. The first event, which, was it Fourth of July?
Thoughts? Fest, Festival of the Superstitions, so Chambers' event.
Couldn't really see, because once you're down in all of the tents, you couldn't tell where you were and where you've been. So I think that's great to, and you said Jeff Kopp, is he the one who coordinates all that?
Yeah, so all the events that are in our parks, he works with those, those groups. And some of it depends on what their needs are, so they had a lot more, so they have about 80 booths compared to the Blues and Brews Festival, you know, doesn't have quite as many, but I think we'll be able to incorporate some of that in there and be able to open up some more of the grass.
Like midway where you can see on both sides.
Yeah.
And you said that it's not commercial. There was a $15 charge for the Blues, so how did that work and?
So for our events, we are able, so our events that we are putting on, we, there can be a charge. Just like Lost Asha Days, they can charge whatever we're partnering with. This is our pilot event, and it is, it's considered a Parks and Recreation event. We partnered with it. We, our name is associated with it. It was our event that we brought in. We had them so that we didn't have to pay for any of the bands. They handled the registration or the event ticket inside. Chamber handled all the alcohol because we would prefer not to do that, and they received that. So there's commercial activity allowed associated with an event. So anything that we do out at, you know, any of our events that we have out there that somebody charges something for, as long as it's associated with our event, that is allowed. We can't allow an agency come in and rent our park and do an event that is solely open to themselves. So right now, Harley-Davidson, for example, if they wanted to come down and host an event down there, because they are a commercial entity and it's their event, they would not be allowed to do that. But like I said, as we look, we would like to open up those opportunities for folks and be able to have commercial usage like they do in other cities at this point in time.
Also, I think we're blessed right now with the empty lots for parking. I think parking will be a problem if, if something happens behind the focal point.
To those. Yeah.
And also, the, we also, a few weeks before the Blues event, we had the wonderful Blue Grass event.
Yes.
And talking with some of the people that put that on, there's some talk, and this is just think about if this can ever happen, some way to possibly merge the two parks, and someone said that over there were the, is it the post office? They have the, if there's some way to like have this stage finishing, then have our stage open up, because I can see both of these events getting really big, and if you could use both parks simultaneously with some way to shuttle back and forth, or give them 10 minutes to walk to the next concert that's happening over here. So that's just some observations that people wanted me to pass along.
And I think on that one, I just would like to just quickly respond. You know, we've talked with Councilmember Evans and many others on day one of the park, too, of those, of utilizing those trails, and Janine did reach out to that landowner, and we were given permission to start exploring, kind of putting a path out that way, and it would be something that we would just, parks could just kind of go in. There's already some existing paths and making them just a little bit more graded and starting with something like that. So we haven't done that yet, and we have a few little things we've got to look at legal-wise, as well as our guys kind of finally wrapped up special event season and are trying to get the pool ready. But really, we think that's a great idea, too. It is a little bit of a walk, so I would agree. We would probably need to come up with some shuttle ideas, but there's also the neighbors over in that area that just want to walk over to the park and they don't want to, you know, walk around. So it is, definitely has a lot of potential, and we are encouraging everybody to go into the Active Transportation Plan that is online and put that that's a desire, because those things, building all that into that plan is really important, I think, for us as we move forward.
Krista.
When you get the movie screen, will people, will the public be able to rent that?
So right now, we don't have that in our fee structure, but we will be going out, so 2020 is when we, when we will be reviewing fees again, so it's very close on the horizon, I guess I should say. That means we'll be talking about it in 2019, so I think we'll be looking at that as a definite possibility and looking to see what that could look at like. So right now, we wouldn't be able to because of not having a fee attached to it, but I think anything that we're in partnership with, with the agency or any kind of partnered events, we'll be able to use them. Other agencies that have partnerships with us, like our IGAs with the school districts or the fire district, you know, those are some things where we'll be able to share those resources.
And then, it's not tied to the park, but it's tied to the movie screen? Float-in movies, is that ever on your radar?
Yeah, so, yep, definitely, and some of the challenges with that is having right lighting at night, so that way, if, you know, people like to bring in those flotation devices, that's how they watch the movies, but seeing underneath them, those are the things that, at our pool, we'd have to make sure that we have everything that we need for that. But that is one of the ideas for the movie screen. What we learned this last summer is that it's really hot. I mean, we already knew that, but it's actually not that hot at night, and it's cool on the grass, but still, people don't really want to come out outside at night, but if we were able to have those events at the pool, we think that'd be a great extra place. So yes, absolutely.
Throw some glow sticks in the bottom of the pool.
There you go.
Or turn the sprinklers on for the grass.
Plenty of cities do it, and so I know we can figure out a way to do it, but that's definitely in the plan.
You know, hopefully, in a, off, off-subject, but real quick, I'll throw it in. Hopefully sometime we can have an event where we do the, watch the Fourth of July from the pool.
Hmm.
The Fourth of July. Anyhow, another question was restaurants with the booths for the, for the Anyhow, another question was restaurants with the booths for the food trucks. So, we are inviting the restaurants when we do the food truck to come down and have a booth.
So, if there are, so for some of our bigger events, so Halloween event, we had worked with Dining Room Cafe. They ended up not being able to come at the end. Same as our grand opening, Cowboy Up was going to come and have a little booth across the street, they just chose not to. And they have felt like they've had plenty of business just by people walking over. I know the Superstition Blues and Brews Festival reached out several times to the neighboring businesses and purposely didn't have barbecue, a barbecue food truck, because they were waiting on some folks that had given us feedback that that was damaging to their business across the street. And so, again, we tried that for this first timeframe, but, you know, moving forward, we'll, we'll be able to kind of quickly ask, and then if we don't have any takers, just go out and move on. So, I know the Chamber did ask for, put it out to anybody that wants it. But then, really, the food trucks are already kind of licensed, that temporary one is a little bit tougher to get. So, yes.
Anyone else? The next one?
So glad we did grass, too, I know there was a, do we do grass, you have to have grass.
Right.
It's awesome.
Yeah, our vendors have really definitely mentioned many times of how much more they've enjoyed Festival of the Superstitions and all of that on grass versus that dusty dirt, and so that's been nice.
Yeah, I've had neighbors and friends say how needed it is to have a place where we have some grass. And it does, it cools, cools the temperature down, so it helps.
Okay, I do promise, this one really is shorter than the last one, so.
We're on, yeah, we're ready.
Okay. City of AJ event process, just wanted to bring this to your attention. We've, we've worked a lot over this last year, the City Clerk's Office, Al Bravo, who handles a lot of the outside special events, and then our department, who handles a lot of events that are held in the parks. And it's always kind of just one of those challenging things, there's a lot of things involved in special events. And sometimes, even those that are putting them on don't really realize all the things that need to go into it. And that, it's not as simple as just, you know, announce, putting out a flyer and announcing an event and people coming. And so, we really have tried hard to find ways to educate the public and to have some easy sheets that maybe would help them to know what they, what they're kind of in for. And then, having staff that can kind of walk them through the process. So, first off, in our process, the most important thing is, is that having the two staff that can walk them through every step of the process is super important. So, depending on where it's at, if it's located in a City of AJ park facility, then that person can contact Jeff Kop. And I'll show you the handout here at the very end of what we have that's online that they can get to. So, Jeff Kop will help with anything in the park. There's so many things that need to be considered, and until we sit down with that event person, it's really hard to know what kinds of things they're going to need to do. If it's located anywhere else in the City of AJ, they need to contact Al Bravo. And it might be as simple as they will share with them what they want to do. And if it doesn't meet some of the criteria to be an event, then there's no reason to go any further. But if it meets some of our criteria, then, then they have to kind of move on. If it's in a park, they're going to have to have some potentially rental fees and some different things like that, that we, no matter what, they will be filling out a form for. So, just the city code designate two types of events, our civic events, and those are the city partnered events that are primarily sponsored by another local organization. Those are the big seven that we adopt with the, with the budget every year. And we'll go into those here in a few minutes. They are, somebody else, they are another nonprofits event that the city said at one point in time, we are going to support with staff and facilities and resources. And so, those are those big events, they are in one area of the code. And then, everything else falls into a community event if it meets the event description. And so, there's a little, few little criterias for letting them know if they meet the event description. If they do, then they will follow everything in the guidelines for a community event. Just wanted to mention that city department activities and events, they follow the community event model if they have businesses and vendors. They do the same things that a regular community event would. When we have our health and wellness event, Jamie follows the exact guidelines that every single other community event person does with the City Clerk's Office and with those vendors. So, that's that. Those civic events, the seven currently budgeted, and that's what you'll be talking about later today. So, just wanted to take this chance to show you that these are those one, they haven't changed. Lost Dutchman Days Rodeo and Parade, Lost Dutchman Marathon, which is not affiliated to Lost Dutchman Days, Arizona Antique Tractor Show, Ben Johnson Days, the Veterans Day Parade, and the Festival of the Superstitions. Those are the ones that they are done by another entity that at some point in time, we worked into our budget and public works, public safety, and Parks and Rec, and other departments have worked into their existing budgets. Community event examples, just so you know what falls into those categories. So, the Community Appreciation Day that we, Al and I were racking our brains trying to come up with some of the examples, because there's not a lot of them that maybe everybody would recognize. But the Community Appreciation Day that is done at Lost Dutchman Realty in the AJ News Office's parking lot, the Farmer's Market Days that are held at Earthheart Park at Horizon Health. And then, like I said, any city department events that have vendors follow the community event process for business activity. So, our Holiday Event and Light Parade, we have vendors, and so they follow all those practices. Fourth of July is a city event, it's in that city department category.
Liz, if I can add to that, events at Superstition Harley-Davidson would fall into that category?
Yes, of community events. So, there are some places that are not at the park, and so, they are considered a community event. And, I had nothing to do with it, I don't know why I just said that. They are not one of the big seven, that's why they're a community event.
Exactly.
Even I get confused sometimes, that's why I tell people to go right to Jeff. Okay, thanks, Kathy. Some event considerations, we have, we've created kind of a little flow chart that I will throw up here for a few seconds so that you can kind of just observe it. There's a lot of consideration things that we want event planners to keep in mind. They're for safety, there's a lot of health and fire codes and city codes, state law that has to be observed. And so, we want to make sure that they are aware of all of those things when they have events that call for that. So, alcohol served or allowed at the event. So, our park facilities allow for an alcohol permit. It gives individuals the ability to bring and consume alcohol at a park facility. It does not give them the ability to sell it or provide it. That, so our alcohol permit that you approved fees for long ago allows people just to come and bring alcohol into the facility. We could do that with an event, we could do that with other things, they just can't provide it or sell it. If an event would like to sell or provide alcohol, they must go through the State Liquor License Board. And I, I know that's the wrong, Larry Kirch told me that's the wrong title of the board, so I'll have to update that. And then, and that, before that goes to them, it comes to all of you, as you all know, as the Special Event Liquor License. So, that's to sell or provide. We've had extensive talks with the Liquor License Board folks. Kathy had shared with us that there is a license that a municipality can get to be able to allow those kinds of things. But as we really looked into it and talked with our insurance company, that's really more in line for like places that have boating docks, or, you know, Lake Pleasant that is part of Maricopa County Government, things that have concessionaires, or cities are doing concessionaires. Truly, for our liability, we could do it, but it would cost a lot of money to add that insurance. And so, their stance is just let some other nonprofit do that and get the money. It's, it's really not worth the headache that we have. If we learn that we're having a lot of events, we might look and head in that direction for some of our things. Food and non-alcoholic beverages, perishable prepared items are regulated by Pinal County Health Department. So, regardless, in our parks, it doesn't matter whether they're selling it, whether they're giving it away, whether they're, what they're doing. If they are at all providing a perishable prepared item, they have to have a health permit. The only exceptions are is if it's a potluck or a family picnic, something of that kind, an employee gathering where they bring all their own things. That's the only thing that doesn't have to be regulated that way and by Pinal County. And that's a Pinal County rule, that is not our rule. Any, if it's a packaged item, they can have that without having a health department, as long as it's a packaged, non-perishable item. Any business activity promoting, exchanging goods or services for money, et cetera, it must follow the city code. And so, I'll show you at the very end, the City of AJ vendor process sheet that was created. We created that when a lot of those state, we, all the taxing and all that changed here in December. We created that so that way, some of those event planners would have a tool right away that they could use. We utilized Renee Mulander, who handles Lost Dutchman Days, and several other event planners to kind of eyeball that and let us know whether that would be helpful or not. And, and they were very great to work with in that process. And so, City Clerk's Office was very involved, and, and Al Bravo and all of our folks. So, we're hopeful that that will be helpful to, to folks. Other considerations, so, there's just a myriad, parking and street access, occupancy standards, sanitation standards. If you're having an event with alcohol, it needs a certain amount more restrooms per the health and sanitation codes than if you aren't having alcohol. So, all of those things, we just don't expect everybody to know all of that. So, we have some guidelines, and our plan is that there is a staff person that would help walk those people. They fill out their application, and then we walk them through those processes as help, in as helpful a way as we can. Event and permit fees, I want to share, there are fees associated with permits, with the renting of our facilities and equipment and the request for services. It's really important, we try to keep those at a very minimal competitive cost. It is regularly compared with the market and then adopted by city council. And we, once we've adopted those fees, we really have very little ability to waive many of them, unless we have an existing IGA or some other kind of agreement that allows us to do so. Those fees are very important to help offset operational maintenance costs. And I hear it all the time, well, we're a nonprofit, we don't make any money. And we completely understand, but the only people that can reserve our facilities right now are nonprofits and individual, personal people, like for a picnic or whatnot. So, they're very important, we have kept them at the nonprofit rate when we compare it with the market. When we start looking at commercial fees, we will compare that to what other cities charge for for-profit businesses and bring that for your consideration. And then, so my last thing is that city staff are, are here to assist. There's lots of departments that need to be worked with. And so, it's not any one department that we can send everybody to. And so, what we've really tried hard to work on over the last year or so is that there are two staff that will help find out what they're trying to do and then walk them through the rest of the process. And again, it's been a, definitely a trial and error and learning, some of the ins and outs. We've had some changes to, you know, state requirements and everything, but I think we're, we're doing a good job of getting a handle on that. So, Jeff Kop, events at park facilities, anyplace else within the city limits is Al Bravo. And if we just direct them to those folks, and they will make sure they get the proper event application. We did combine our event application, so that way, there's not two separate ones for that. And so, that's really good. And then, I don't know if this doc cam is gonna... It probably has to run that.
It'll just take a second.
Okay. So, we did create two documents that are on that, on the website, on that location, and... Turn it down. The city manager says we're done with this presentation. You guys can see it, I'm kidding. So, this is a copy of our vendor, so it looks like this is a process, it's really, there are three steps. And then, depending on what they're trying to do, these are what a mobile food vendor needs to worry about. Here's what a temporary food booth, a vendor booth, a nonprofit vendor, or a hobbyist, according to the code. And so, we've laid that all out, like I said, talked with some of those event sponsors that, that work on these and hopefully help that, to, to get them to have some understanding of it. And then, we have a similar document that just talks about the event process in general. So, again, it lists in bold the big consideration topics. Here's what you need to be thinking about when you're trying to plan an event, and here are the details for all of it. This is found on our event page, and we will put it on several different locations on the website. But people can click there and go right to our process sheet. And we definitely appreciate you guys sending people in the direction of our staff, and they can kind of help. And I think with that, we just have questions.
Your Honor.
Yes.
And Liz, this question might have been for the other agenda item, but when a small group rents the park, is that the entire park, can they close it down just for that event?
No, we prob, we would really, again, avoid doing that if, unless it were for one of our big events, one of our civic events, or a major Parks and Rec event that, that had to be done in that way. So, we've had several, we had about seven small nonprofit organization events, and they generally rent the Ramada and maybe a little bit of the grass in front of them. And again, we're just amazed, it's like one tenth of the park that, you know, a hundred people or two hundred people take up. And so, we generally rent out to them a space. And then, our goal is to leave the splash pad open as often as we can. Again, unless we're having a major event where there's alcohol and we want to close it down. I'd say we closed down the park maybe four times this year, maybe five. But they were events that were open largely to the public.
So, Dave, is this regarding the event that you and Krista and I went to?
Right.
Yeah, because we went to an event down there and
Education event?
The atmosphere was kind of strange. I mean, there were some, a few kids over but it almost felt, you know, a lot of it was being wasted. And we were wondering, where do we draw the line if, you know, I'm, this is going to be a stretch, but let's say the KKK wants to rent that park. What, what do we do, they shut it off and it's theirs? Or, you know, and then you go beyond there, and you just, you can see where it could progress. So, how, how would we handle that?
So, one of the things is that we do have the power of deciding what our parks are going to, what is available to the public. So, our, the way our code reads and the way everything reads in our park regulations, as well as our park fees, is that they are available to us first and foremost. And so, we have ultimate say, if we want to open for public, then we would leave it open for public. We have limited times that we want to do that. But for the times or the spaces that are available to the pub, to people to rent, they're, I'll say within reason, we can't turn away a group. So, if a group wants to come and do a rally, and Joel, maybe you can jump in on this if I say this wrong. But if a group has a permit, then they can be there. You know, that's something that is allowed in public facilities, in parks, as well as, you know, on the steps of City Hall or whatever. And the main thing is that they can't congregate without that permit. So, a group couldn't, our, part of our code is that they can't congregate if it's more than twenty-five, if it's twenty-five people or more, they have to have a permit and be in a reservable space. So, I would say historically, we have not prevented a group, and we haven't had something to that extent. I think I would wonder, you know, can we prevent the KKK from having an event? We have rules about certain religious things, we do have some different rules. But as long as they pay, we can't waive fees for a political event. When the school did their SOS fundraiser, I, I take it back. When the PAC affiliated with AJUSD did their override event, they rented the pool. And again, as long as we don't give them that for free and we charge them like we would any other nonprofit, then that was kind of within our rules. Am I along the okay lines?
So, it's a question, right? Okay. Yes, you cannot discriminate against what some people may not like. The, the code, as I recall, does require permits, it cannot be waived, because then you have to waive it for everybody. So, why would you have permit fees? But I don't think that's a good idea, by the way, so you should still have permit fees. There's also something called a recreational use statute, which I'll just briefly mention. If you charge someone a fee to get in or to use the property, and something bad happens, an accident, then there's something called municipal indemnity, which essentially, the city would not be liable if you're charging someone a fee. So, that's how that would work. And I can go into more of that at a different time.
But kind of back to the, just how it feels, I think that those are what we look at, keeping it to that farther end, not over, you know, maybe we wouldn't have something like that over by the splash pad in the future. Those would be things that we'd want to kind of keep in mind as we look at it. But certainly, open to looking into how other folks do it. I think that's one of the things that Bryant had mentioned, is that maybe we'll check and see how some of the other cities kind of handle some of those, and see if there are ways within our means.
Yeah, the concern was that a small group, say they rent that one Ramada, you know, obviously, they're not using the bulk of the park, and to still allow people to use the splash pad or whatever, so.
Yes, and so each of those areas of the grass are broken up into areas, so our multi-use fee is for a small portion, portion of each area of that grass. You could have multiple people reserving that area, and so they're only paying for their little small portion. And then, our rangers will be kind of making sure that they're, for the most part, saying, it doesn't mean they can't go over and use the splash pad or something, but they can't take over the splash pad or use the whole grass, and, and we're not getting our money's worth for it.
But that, that in particular did not close down the park.
Correct.
They had just their little...
And I, if I recall, it was in kind of its own little area, they, I don't think that they were all spread out too much.
Yeah, it wasn't a problem, it was just a thought that came up.
Absolutely, like why, you know, because what could it be, what could be a problem?
Yeah, any, any more questions on this? Because we were considering going into exec to ask these, and it's better that we get them out here.
Okay.
I would just like to say, good job, thank you so much, this is very comprehensive. But now that this is done, when Janine and I had the ma- when Janine and I had the meeting with Mr. Ness, that landowner, because he is trying to sell that property, as soon as we possibly could secure whatever path we choose from Flatiron to Plaza,
It would be in our interest to do it.
If it's there first,
Right.
we could make it part of a new owner's plan.
Right.
They have to include that. So, the sooner even if it just is ablated with a gannon.
And I think that's what Nick's thought was, is that it shouldn't be too difficult to do something like that. So, we can at least have that path.
Mr. Ness could not have been more amicable.
Good.
He just said, "I don't care where you put it and Joel's just gonna go bald over this." I can tell. He's rubbing his forehead.
It'll be easy. It'll be an easy one.
If I could add one thing on political activities, it may be, depending on who wants to rent the park, the Park and Rec Department would have to create a free speech zone. And they don't have to pay because that's a free speech issue. And so, then there'd probably have to be some kind of police protection depending on the extent of the group. So, I do want to point that out also.
And keep in mind that all of our events, we have a free speech zone for that very reason. And we do have to allow people to come and exercise their First Amendment, right? As long as they are not unruly or inciting some kind of issue that has happened at many of our events, so.
I never saw anybody use it out of the last document. It's this little area, free speech zone.
Right. We get a lot of like political signatures and petitions at some of our Fourth of July and things like that, but that's about it. All right, that concludes...
Your honor. I just wanted to add one little comment and that is a burden that's been lifted for me and I hope for anybody at staff and our council. And that is, if you're unsure, if you're unclear, if, what to say to someone when they're in front of you in the community about an event or what to do with it, call Al Bravo, call Jeff Cop. That's the best place. I've learned that because I've kind of went down a path and I, "Oh, I don't think that'll be a problem." And I start at that, that's kind of famous last words on, "Oh, I think that'll be fine." And it's an instant, like, "Ah," now they start thinking it is fine. I've talked to the city manager. It must be fine. And then, I go back and find out, "Hmm, wasn't fine or was scheduled before." So, if you're ever in that, I just encourage us to, it's been a great thing to just for me to say, "I don't know. Let me just check." That we're very busy now. We got a lot of great events, that kind of thing.
Krista?
I have a couple of questions regarding community events. You mentioned in your presentation that there were certain services, city services, that might incur a fee. What does city services?
So, anything that's not either the facility itself or equipment. So, we have a personnel fee, for example. So, if they want somebody to stay there, if they can't find a way to secure whatever they're securing, we might have to have staff that are there. If they need help with the stage and they're going to have more things that involve opening and shutting it multiple times or running AV equipment, then that would be staff fees. At the Multi-Gen Center, for example, we have staff fees when it's outside of our regular hours. If we were going to require the police department to come, if they couldn't find their own security and we were going to ask the police department, they would have the opportunity to have a personnel fee. Public Works to run their gannon or to do something else, again, within their ability. Whether they have time or not is the other big question. But if we were able to provide any of those things that are needed for that event in our fees, we have a personnel fee, we have some other, running a water truck, for example, is a service technically. So, those are the services that we were referring to.
So, then some of the, you had mentioned some of the different events that Parks and Rec is partnered with. For community events that are not necessarily sponsored by or partnered with the city, what about, for example, the police department participating? Are there fees for that?
Well, I think it just depends on what they want. So, I think, again, if it's something that fulfills the police department's mission to be there, so if it's opened up and they want everybody to come and have an opportunity to just share their information and Rob or whoever the chief designates feels like that's a good way to get the word out about their thing, then no, they wouldn't do that. It's really more if they're needing them as a service. So, same as Parks and Rec, we'll come to lots of groups, events, and have a booth, share information. I mean, it's a great way for us to market. We're not going to charge anybody to bring out our games or our little activities at our booth to have people come and learn about our services. So, I'd say no in the example you gave, as long as it was within their, they had the people to do it and it, you know, fit their mission.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Because I can't leave you without a question.
Great.
Where's Ironwood Cove and Arroyo Verde?
Okay, let me go back to my map. So, they are both HOA retention basins. Those are some of those ones that we inherited long ago when the city was, had that idea of having, you know, requiring the developer to put in the neighborhood park and then we would maintain it. So, we got out of that business after the first, I think, three and never did it again, but we have responsibility for those.
I'd never heard of them before.
Yes, and they're not real, and that's why they have asterisks. We do not reserve them. They are not real big amenities.
In the past, has there been any conflicts with two groups wanting an area at the same time?
Well, there's always people that, whoever comes in first gets it really. And so, we have a very good reservation system through our software. And truly, there's not, I guess I can't think of any time where it's caused a major problem. There's certainly times when people call and a facility is already reserved and they just have to pick a different date. I'm not aware of anything that was really a major conflict, other than they were just unhappy that it was already booked.
Anyone else? Thanks, Liz.
Thank you.
Good job.
Presentation and discussion on fiscal year 1819 budget classification and compensation plan for city employees.
Bryant? Thank you, Your Honor. Bryant Powell, City Manager. Super excited to be here tonight as this is a culmination of a bunch of work that our department directors have been sorting out. Donna, come on up and Anna, come on up. We're gonna maybe need you here in a little bit to help balance the budget tonight before you as the city manager's proposed draft balanced budget. One of the main functions that we do at staff is to help present before you your goals and objectives, a budget that is to meet those. And this last year, we've had the opportunity to work on our best estimates on revenue. We'll get into that a little bit, our best estimates on expenditures. And then, based on those, we've presented a balanced budget. But before we jump into that, I want to just say thanks to Donna and her team and Matt and Anna as a core budget group that have helped get us to this point. We'll have several budget hearings and public hearings is required. And I also want to thank our department directors who do such a fine job in understanding what we can do in this community and where we're headed and aligning that with those finite resources. So, we'll jump in. Matt, let's go on to the next slide here. And the next one are some highlights of the current fiscal year that we're in. We've had some great events and Liz did a great job of explaining some of those. Next slide, Matt. Community events, Superstition Blues and Earth Day Ladybug Release. Don't want to forget those. Great events. And then, we continue the implementation of the 0.2% sales tax increase on several roads. As you have noticed over this last year, Pallaverty, Broadway, First Avenue. And I've received a bunch of great compliments from the residents. Court crew cleanup efforts. I hope that this is in align, and I know that it is, with our goal and mission of having a safe and clean community. This last year, we held another household hazardous waste event. We'll talk a little bit about that as far as budgeted dollars for 1819. So, let's talk a little bit about what we're seeing in the economy. We believe that there will be a 2.5% GDP growth in the country. State estimates are right around 3%. We've based our expenditures in the general fund and in the HERF right around a 3% number. So, what does that represent? That represents about a $1.1 million increase in the base revenue, of net new revenues. And then, as we went to our staff, we started with some of the efforts of expenditures. You'll find that we've got mandated costs, costs that we need to continue no matter what. And those would be your public safety retirement systems, both in the police department, public safety, and Arizona State Retirement. Those numbers this year get us to about a $240,000 number. The implementation of the step plan or the classification comp plan is a goal to keep and encourage our talent. We are a service industry. We provide service to our community. And this budget includes a 2.5% step increase for all career status employees. And that would be on July 1. And that number is about a $450,000 number investment to your staff. And we thank you. As a proposed budget, if it can stay, that is a significant investment in your staff.
Just to clarify, Bryant, it'll be the first full pay period in the new fiscal year.
This one gets me. This is where I get into trouble. Because staff will believe they get it exactly on July 1 and it's actually not. I don't know when the exact date is, but it's usually after the first full pay period, so. Thank you. Keep me straight.
Don't plan anything new until after.
Yeah, let us get through the first full pay period. This current fiscal year, we had enough funds and we've just finished. And if you get a chance to go out to Superstition Shadows, what is it, Jamie? Swim area? No. Aquatic Center is a new pool deck. And the pool is in need of replastering. And so, in the budget this year is a one-time amount for about $280,000 to replaster the pool. I think it's important that we, as we look to doing new things and we continue to try to do new things in the community, that we continue to reinvest and invest in our existing facilities. We are adding, or we have proposed, a second household hazardous waste event in the budget. When we did it this last spring, we realized how popular and needed this is in the community. And so, we have a second one in for the fall. So, the next one, if it stays and is able to keep going, would be in the fall and in the spring. One net new position in GIS, geographic information systems. This is a net new position, however, the funding from it comes from existing interns that we had in the budget. So, it's almost pretty much a one-to-one ratio. And then, I'll just remind us all that we are continuing to implement our fleet financing program. And very soon, we'll start to see more new vehicles. And I think that it's important that we know that that's coming because everyone will say, "How did they get all of them?" We're going to a new fleet program. And that's to the tune, I think, pretty soon here, Mike and Matt, 20 vehicles, 19 vehicles by June.
Yeah, we're hoping 20 vehicles soon.
Yeah.
And then, additional vehicles next year as well.
So, that kind of is that slide, Matt. Any of the others? So, I'd like to share a couple items. I think it's a good opportunity to share with the community that when a resident goes to purchase a sales tax in the city of Apache Junction, $10, the state sales tax of that amount, or almost half of that, 91 cents, is from a state sales tax. Then 11 cents goes to the county and then 24 cents comes to the city. And so, this is something that I, we stress and we work really hard in explaining to the community that the city of Apache Junction, and Matt, go to the next slide, the city of Apache Junction does not levy a city property tax. So, when folks come to us and say, "Well, my taxes are too high." So, we'll say, "Well, tell us a little bit about what you mean." My property taxes. And say, "Okay, well, those are different entities. Those are providing governmental good or public good. However, none of those come to your revenue to provide PD, Parks and Rec, Library." Now, we do levy a sales tax at 2.4% and that is not the entire amount, even within that number. And when I do Citizen Leadership Institute, it's one of the biggest surprises people have is they realize, "Wow, of all that amount, even in the sales tax, a certain portion is only to the city of Apache Junction." So, that concludes kind of my major portion of this. We've had some meetings already. I'd like Donna to finish up our staff presentation with a few slides on our general fund revenue.
Good evening, Mary. So, just wanted to point out for the general fund revenues, our main revenue stream there is the city sales tax. It's 47% roughly, or 12.9 million. Then, the second biggest source of revenue for us is state shared revenue. It's another 42% and that consists of our state sales tax at 15% or 3.9 million. The state revenue sharing at 4.9 million, 18% of our revenue stream. And the county vehicle license, which is a 2.5% or 9% of the, 2.4, I'm sorry, 2.5 million or 9% of the budget. So, for the department expenditures, our largest department is public safety with 39% of the budget, followed by Parks and Rec, 15%. So, those two departments alone make up over half of our budget, 54%. Then, the next ones just kind of all follow in line. HERF fund revenues. This is an interesting...
Oh, no, I'm fine. I'm just, as soon as she said HERF, it's like wah, wah, wah.
So, HERF fund revenues, this is kind of an interesting one. We did experience a decrease this year and the next slide will show you a little bit better presentation of that. The HERF revenue itself, last year was at 2.9 million. This year, it is at 2.5 million. So, that is why you see our trending line going back down again. So, not the way we want to see things go. So, any questions about revenue or expenditures?
The decrease in the HERF funds are for reasons for, or what are the reasons, rather, for the decrease?
Yeah, so generally speaking, the things that affect HERF, probably two or three things, is distributed to the counties and then it's broken up by population into the cities. So, it could be others' growth and population are outpacing our growth rate. That's what we saw during the recession as well as recent years. Alternative fuel vehicles can affect that as people use less gasoline. And so, price gases also impact that. Price goes up, people use less fuel and we see less revenue. So, there's lots, those are just a couple of the issues that have a direct impact on HERF. Exactly why it is this year, we probably couldn't pinpoint, but it's among those types of reasons of those fluctuations in actual collections, so.
And even with the passage of the vehicle registration fee that's going to go to DPS, we won't see additional HERF funds for over a year.
Have you read the latest from the league?
If we see it, yeah.
It may, it may go elsewhere, such as the schoolteachers.
You never know from day to day.
But nobody at the legislature wants to talk about that yet.
I thought it was your mark specifically for DPS.
Yes, yes, that's what they...
Matt, can you show the next slide? So, our next steps are tentative budget adoption on Monday, May 15. And then, we have anticipated a final budget adoption special meeting on June 18, which would get us in line for a fiscal year start July 1. And Your Honor, we're here to, we have our department directors here that could answer questions.
So, Brian, is there another budget that's not here? Like some people think, like, some people think that we should be more out in the open with this.
Oh, gosh.
I mean, you can't be more out in the open than this. This is down to the penny.
This is to the line item to the dollar of every expenditure in the city that's proposed. And, correct, so there is no other budget?
Yes.
And this is available online?
That is correct, Vice Mayor. This is available and we'll make it online as we go along and make changes.
Doesn't get any more transparent than this.
Yeah, we were... Joel's helping me clarify. So, for the special meeting, it's Monday, May 14. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Should be May 14.
Is that right, Kath? We'll get that on there. Okay, so that's something that we'll change and make sure is on your... But that is correct. This is line item budget down to every expenditure within the general fund, the HERF, all the funds, actually. And we will put it online and we would encourage and invite anyone that would like to come talk to me or Matt or Anna or Donna. We would love to talk to them.
And so, for clarification, that the line item budget isn't online yet. It will be attached as an item to your next, the adoption night, which is that May 14. Now, it'll be attached for anyone to view and prove once that agenda becomes public. What will be? The budget, all the line item budget, yeah.
So, Brian, is the PowerPoint that we just saw, is that going to be with the budget? Because those graphs are wonderful. That was an excellent job.
We will, excellent, we'd love to do that and we'll email these out to our council right now.
We can attach it to the agenda item as well.
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
Let's update the dates and everything, though.
Yes, we'll...
Yes, so we'll get those out, yeah.
Yeah, because that'll make it so much... Yeah, because that'll make it so much faster, ready to, um, for the general public to understand.
That's the reason I snapshot it every year, because then I have it right on my phone for people that ask. I don't have to dig for it, I don't have to point them somewhere, I can say, God.
You'll have it right there and sync it and send it out.
And the picture, the, like Gail said, the picture really breaks it down. It does. It really breaks it down a lot easier, so.
We appreciate that.
Do we have any questions for those folks sitting way back there in the back?
They're all sitting in the back.
We should make them sit in the front row.
So quiet.
They're avoiding the camera, I think, because, I don't know.
Oh, Matt, Matt McNulty is probably zooming in on their faces.
That's Spencer, and that's Liz.
Are there any questions, seriously?
I have a comment. I, I would just like to thank all of the staff for the work that they put into a budget every year to come up with a balanced budget that gives the city those things that the city needs and, and doesn't overwhelm everybody. I, I just think you've done a marvelous job, and I thank you very, very much for that.
And not only what the city needs, but also what the community is used to receiving, and it continues on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. I've got, I'd like to thank the staff. They answered all my questions. Sat down with them for 45 minutes or something, and, uh, they had all the answers right there. They were very, uh, efficient, and what they didn't have, they got right back to me. I really appreciate everything that you guys put in to get in this budget. I'd like to make a proposal, though. And, um, that is, I'm passing down the proposal to everybody, and if you could put the slide up for me. I'd like to make a proposal to move $80,000 from the mayor and city council's budget, number 514656, Special Contract Services, and move it into, um, actual city, um, department usages that we could use to better serve our community. The reason that I'm doing this is, I think that, uh, we have three purposes that we have our, for any government. Through, the three of those are for public safety, for the fair and equitable, um, exchange of commerce, and then for public welfare. And that's with the caveat that those things that the general citizen can't do for themselves. So, um, you know, the government is only here to do what citizens can't provide for themselves. So I would like to split that $80,000 amongst, uh, well, six different items. The first one is to a maintenance and repair of the police department, to, uh, replace and upgrade the antiquated interview rooms, which would amount to $15,000. Capital outlay of office equipment and furniture for a three-day scanner, which will help in the investigation process, it'll be $20,000. Uh, training of police staff that has been not happening for years, which, uh, will amount to, uh, $10,000. And then, um, small tools and equipment to replace antiqu, uh, outdated cameras and recorders for the line staff, which is $9,000. And then for parks and recreation, there's, uh, $20,000 going towards a smaller, uh, shade structure for Prospector Park. Those amounts add up to $74,000, and we could put the remainder of the $6,000 of the $80,000 into our, um, to replenish the savings that we are using, uh, to, uh, make up the difference in our budget. And then you could see, there's, uh, one, two, three, four other items that the staff, uh, excuse me, three other items that the staff has suggested that we could possibly use the money for also.
Your Honor.
Yes.
So the suggestion is to no longer give Health and Human Services any money, and to take that money, even though Health and Human Services does in fact answer your third caveat that you named, though I think there are more than that, but it was interesting. Because those funds go to organizations who do for people who need and cannot do for themselves. I, I don't understand how you can give those three purposes of city government and then immediately eliminate the third purpose.
Well, okay. Though, money that we're using through the Health and Hu- Human Services grant process that we go through every year, the money is going through a process to grant money to nonprofits that serve citizens of our community. And nonprofits are already set up by our federal government to not have to pay any income tax or any, uh, anything on the money that they, uh, uh, receive. Also, the people that provide the money, don't, donate to the nonprofits, receive a tax deduction on their tax return. And then the third caveat, the, the third part about that one is, is that we are deciding, we are taking money, the city, the city council, the city, is taking money from our citizens and redistributing it to nonprofits for, uh, purposes that are good. I'm not discounting anything that those entities are doing for the citizens of our community. But I don't think it's a purpose of our government is to take money from our citizens and use it to give to nonprofits who have the ability, and should be their mission, to go out and raise the money to provide those services to their citizens. And so, and then to answer your question about the third one, yeah, debatable as to what the purpose of government is. That's a, you know, we could stand here for, sit here for hours and hours, and it's been debated for the last 230 years, um, as to what the purpose of the United States government is. And just especially, um, the, the point of, uh, public welfare. But I, I strongly believe that it's not our purpose to take citizens' money and distribute it to nonprofits that can serve and get money on their own. And we, as a city, have many needs that are being unmet. And we can use this money to serve all of our citizens, or a large portion of our citizens, um, as opposed to just, uh, I think the ones that came down here today. There was three, I think, uh, entities that, uh, Health and Human Services, um, are going to put forth to us. But we could, the city staff and our city purpose is to help the community as a whole, not specific groups.
Councilmember Strubel, I, I think you're, you make some valid points, but I think it, at this stage of the game for this year's budget, I think we're all kind of blindsided by this, as well as staff, so. I, I think it might be, let's discuss this during the off times. I mean, I don't see it happening this year, obviously.
Well, that's part of the.
Have you, have you spoken with staff on this before?
Of course I have, because this is who I got the information from. Um, but this is the part of the process of our budgeting. Um, we didn't receive the budget until, um, uh, I, the 14th of, uh, April, which is two, three, two weeks ago, a little over two weeks ago. So we, I had no idea what was in the budget, um, as to what to change. And this is part of the budget process that we have to do. This is, you know, uh, Bryant, uh, it, it's titled the city manager's budget, but in actuality, it's the city council's budget. Part of our, uh, the city council's duties is to, in essence, develop, um, approve, and then make sure that the budget is, is adhered to. And, um, if you want to call it that this is late in the game, but we, we don't officially approve this until Ju- uh, June 15th.
Your Honor.
Or.
Your Honor. I think, um, for me, I think the reason it seems like it's late in the game is, number one, none of us have heard this prior to this, other than the staff. And thank you for talking to the staff prior to this, because it does feel like being blindsided. But I think, for me, what it feels like is, last year, we had the process with Health and Human Services. And so there was a knowledge that this, in an expectation, being that this is what is part of the budget every year, that it would be a part of the budget this year. So maybe six months ago, it probably should have been brought forth. So for me, it does feel last minute for that reason.
Your Honor.
Yes.
And another point is, a lot of these nonprofits, uh, that provide services to these people receive state and federal dollars, which are tax dollars. So we're taking tax money, whether it's at the state level or the federal level, giving it back into nonprofits to help those members of society that need that help. So to me, the argument that it's just because it's city funds being used for that, many of them operate on state and federal, which is our tax dollars as well. But I think it's also a responsibility of society to help those people, so we need to allocate those dollars that we can.
I couldn't agree with you more. I don't think it's a function of the state and the federal government to provide funding to nonprofits either, um, and.
But it's not funding its services. They're paid for services.
No, well, that's debatable, because nonprofits are set up to raise money on their own, to provide services to the people that they serve. And this is why the IRS code sets up a special section just for 501(c)(3)'s and 501(c)(4)'s and 501s (3)'s and all these other ones, so that they can go out and do this without having any tax ramifications or any, actually lack the, or, or reduced reporting, um, uh, requirements. I just, and I, and true, I'll be honest with you, um, I kind of walked through this. I, I was, uh, sat, started sitting on this council, uh, a year, 16 months ago, I guess it's been. And I took the first year of just watching the process, and watching what took place, and what, what happened, and actually sitting here, as opposed to sitting out there and watching, um, what, what I perceived to be taking place. Um, and it's been an eye-opening process. And, um, I took the time to do it today, tonight, during the process of the budget implement, uh, development and implement, implementation, to bring light to it, to bring some transparency to it. I, I, just because, um, it has been done since, uh, for 30 years, basically, doesn't mean that we continue, that we need to continue to do it, especially when we have city staff, we have city services that are being, uh, not being totally funded, and, and from year to year, on an ongoing basis, and we are not serving the community as a whole. Um, and, and people could say $80,000 out of a, well, what's it, 2.8 million, uh, $28 million budget is just an insignificant amount. But to me, it's a principle thing, is that the government isn't here to fund nonprofits and to help them provide, uh, uh, the services to the citizens that they, uh, that they, uh, apply for through the IRS to, uh, to, um, to provide. Plus, in the last, I can't remember, when was Friends of AJ started? What year was that? How long ago?
Five years ago.
Five years ago? So, so in that period, period of time, we, we didn't purposely set up Friends of AJ, but it was set up by the community to help us, um, gather money to provide other services. And, you know, I was just out at, uh, the Friends of AJ, uh, golf tournament yesterday, and they raised a little over $6,000 to provide services to the community. We have a number of events that go on throughout the commu- uh, community to raise money for the Boys and Girls Club, for, um, CAFSA, for, uh, all the, the United Way, everything that we provide money for. And what we're doing is we're taking money from our citizens and redistributing it to those groups that need the money. But we have to take away the, the, this sense of dependence that not just citizens have, but also entities have upon the government. And if we can reduce the amount of money that we, that we take from our citizens and allow people out there to have more of it in their pocketbooks and decide what they want to do with their money instead, they will, uh, support these nonprofits that we.
So Jeff, are you, uh, if this would happen, you'd say then that the whole Health and Human Services Board would be dissolved?
Well, it would, I would hope that the Health and Human Services has other functions besides looking at grants and, uh, um, and awarding this X amount of dollars. Um, there are, there are, I would hope that they would have a different function. This is one of the things that I have always asked, because, uh, last fall, when we did the interviews for new members of boards, was to get it out there, exactly what, uh, the duties and responsibilities of the, of the boards were, so that the people knew what they are. If, if we don't have a purpose for Health and Human Services, other than to,
Help people.
Decide what the funding is, then, wha- yeah.
All right, well, this isn't a work session, so let's.
Can we keep working here, just for a minute? I, I, um, I'm appalled. Okay, that's my first reaction. I'm absolutely appalled. We are in helping to fund some of these agencies who may well be getting tax dollars from somewhere, but certainly not enough to do a whole lot. We are helping our community. We are feeding people, keeping them off the streets. We are giving people a second chance at employment, at a variety of other services that they don't have that opportunity for. And to, to say that we do not, as a city government, have some small obligation to those people in our community who need help is, it's a shame. It's a real shame.
Your Honor.
Yes.
The other, and I would take, uh, um, you said something earlier that, that is incorrect. I worked for the mental health center here for 17 years. We didn't fundraise. We're a nonprofit. We were reimbursed for services provided to those people.
Exactly.
So they didn't go out and fundraise like you said they do. We were reimbursed for services that those people needed by federal and state tax dollars, which is, to me, an appropriate service to people.
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, that is a very true statement. And I also, back in the day, back in, uh, from 1996 through 1999, I ran a community health center in, uh, Butte, Montana. And, yes, exactly, I did not go out and fundraise to provide services to my, to my, uh, uh, constituents, my, my, the people, my clients, for the lack of a better term. But they, because the federal government has, had mandated that they were going to serve a certain population of poverty, we, we billed for those services through the Department of Health and Human Services, the Federal Department of Health and Human Services. And so, true, we, we didn't go out and, uh, uh, raise money, although we did go out and raise money to help, uh, you know, do certain services that, uh, uh, you know, mammograms and that type of stuff, that we provided at a, at a no-cost basis to, um, our, our, our clients. There are definitely reasons for doing that. And there's a difference between the Community Health Center and, uh, United Way and Boys and Girls Club and the Food Bank and those type of things. Because those, the Food Bank, the United Way, the Boys and Girls Club, these entities do not gain, gather their revenue from billing, uh, government entities for services provided for their constituents. They actually go out and raise money to provide the services to the people that they serve.
Gail and Chip.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I think this debate can go all the way back to the Irish potato famine, and who's going to pay for.
to pay for what. I don't want this to sound, I don't even know what the word would be. But the one thing that I do not miss about my late husband is the night after night discussions on what funding source was just cut again, and how are we going to provide service to these people? You made a comment, serving the community, the whole community. It, it is part of our community, and it's part of this community, it's part of Scottsdale, it's part of Paradise Valley. And nonprofits that receive funding from the state, it, it, the state or the federal, it, it's the only funding source that you can have a budget, and every quarter, they can change what they're going to send you. One, one directive we received was, we used to have a house that homeless people that had a serious mental illness, when they were released from that, there was a house they could go to, it was monitored, they received their medications, it was safe, and they quit the funding, so we had to shut the house down. The state came out the next day and said, "Why'd you shut that house down? We needed a house like that here." Well, yeah, we do need it, but if there's no funding for it, it, it can't survive on its own. So, I'm disappointed, or sorry, or let down, that there's not more, besides the eighty thousand that we could give to help the community. The economics in our community, we have some very low. I, I hear people complaining that we're getting a goodwill. For God's sake, Scottsdale has good wills. It serves a part of the community. And you may not like the tax structure that nonprofits have, but it was set up that way for a reason, and for us as a council in a city, it is our responsibility to help the community as a whole. And, and there's people in need, there's people that just have a need until they can get that next job in their next house. And some people who are seriously mentally ill will have that need for the rest of their lives. But to have eighty thousand dollars divvied up to an interview room, or a shade structure, I think is a crime in itself.
Chip?
First off, I am taken back severely by this, and had no idea any aspect on it. And of course, when we're doing this, funds, it's, it is to go to people in the community. It's not to go to, I would say, just general funds would be used anywhere else, other than in our community. And it's our, the way I understand it, when it was set up initially, and continuing on, it is structured that way to help our community in the aspects of, for, well, like the Boys and Girls Club, in the aspects of helping families that have, I'm going to say, the need of the use of the Boys and Girls Club. And it, it's something that, yes, they have fundraisers, but they'd be the first to tell you that they don't raise enough funds, in the aspect to keep on going, to keep doing. It's, it's a problem in our society, in the aspect on it, that we have funding that is not, I'm going to say, properly, I'll say, distributed out, and this is one way that we have, as a council, has set up, that we wanted to, basically, try to assist in the, I'll say, the, the people of our community, strictly in our community.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I offer staff's involvement in this particular proposal for clarification? I believe it was last Wednesday, Councilman Struble posed the question to us if there were an extra eighty thousand dollars in the budget, particularly for the Police Department and Parks and Rec, what would they want to do with it? An information request like we get from many of you, at any time throughout the year, in this case, it's budgetary related. We then asked the department directors, if you had an extra forty thousand or eighty thousand, what would you do, and what priority order would be in, and, and we got this information to Councilman Struble on Thursday. And so, what you have before you tonight is the City Manager's proposed budget, which doesn't include this, is not part of that proposal. However, after this proposal is presented to you, now becomes your work and your job to make it your budget, and that's what you'll be voting on in two weeks, to make it the city budget. And, and so, I just offer that clarification, that this now becomes yours, like Councilman Struble said, it's your time to discuss different priorities and different funding, it's yours to decide, and if someone wanted to make a change to the budget, it'd be offered through the motions at the next budget, tentative budget meeting. But tonight, this, of course, is for discussion, as Councilman Struble mentioned, but I just wanted to offer that clarification from staff perspective. If that had come from any council member, we would have provided the same type of response and information.
Yeah, let me clarify, they did not, in any way, they were very neutral in their presentation of the material that I requested from them, and they were in no way in, all they, all they did was provide me with information to, to present the proposal. Just wanted to clarify that.
I think, if everybody turns to the back of their book, which I know some of you guys don't use the book anymore, in the first glossy page there, Jeff, this is why everybody's surprised where it says the Code of Teamwork and Cooperation.
You know, that's a very interesting point.
Under number two and three, it's just that, we've, we've talked about this, and you, you are the newest member here, we've had this conversation about not surprising your colleagues.
You know, that's a very interesting point, because I read that this weekend, when I was preparing for that, and I'll be honest with you, I've been on this council, like I said, for sixteen months, and I have had not, I've had nobody come to me and ask me for my opinion on anything that was been brought to the council, on any issue that's been brought here. And so, I agree, but yet, we also have an independence here, that we can't share, you know, we have to be careful about who we, the number of council members that we talk to, that we can't create a quorum prior to bringing an issue or a proposal of any kind to the full council. So, I agree with you, I read that, and I was like, wow, that's interesting, because I hadn't had anybody talk to me about anything that's been brought forward. So, I agree with you, Mayor Surti, on that's exactly what that says, but it has to come full circle, and it doesn't, it, it, be honest with you, that, that's all great and good, I'm all about teamwork and, and everything, especially in my businesses, and, and the entities that I work with, the nonprofits that I work with, that sit on boards, that we do work as teams, because we have a single purpose, and we have a single understanding of where we're going within those entities. But that's not the case, and I, I read that this weekend, and it was kind of like, that's, we, we, you know, you talk about the federal government, where they set their little, you know, the federal senators and representatives, and even the state senate, and their House of Representatives, the state house, you know, they work out their little, but I was understanding that we aren't supposed to be doing that, and so, maybe I'm wrong.
No, yeah, you're definitely can, we can have, that's why we're having this discussion, but I'm, I'm thinking, though, maybe in the next year, get this on direction to staff to discuss it, because we were all just, just surprised that we were going to be talking about this tonight.
Well, I, I didn't know, I couldn't go talk to anybody about it.
Let me make a comment.
You can talk to Joel before we go on, you can talk to two others, correct?
Well, so that there's not a quorum when items come up, you're talking generally.
Yeah.
Correct. However, the discussion tonight, this is quite appropriate, this is on the agenda, and this is a very good time to bring it up.
And I'm not saying there's anything that we shouldn't, I mean, I'm just letting him know why everybody's so surprised, that's why, so, Krista.
To me, it would have been, would it not have been okay or appropriate to ask for this specific proposed change to be a part of the agenda? To me, the blindsiding is the, Jeff, is the, the proposed change that you're bringing forward, that's where I, I don't, and I can't speak for the others, but that's where I feel.
But see, that's part of the process, we're, we're, we were presented with a city manager's budget, and part of budget process is to come in and, and not, like I said, the staff did an amazing job, they, they, we have, we have, we have a finite amount of funds that we get to use, that, that we take from our citizens, and we get to use. And we use conservative estimates, the revenue estimates are, are conservative, we, we juggle expense items, and to come back to the point that I, the, the agenda was to discuss the budget, and to, not just to carte blanche, say, okay, good, let's get on to the next one, and, you know, in two weeks, oh, we did our job, let's go, it, it's really, truly to have a discussion on changes. And I truly, strongly believe that this is a change that needs to be done, for the betterment of our citizens, and just the betterment of, of what government does for our citizens.
Your Honor, I'm, just one comment, and I think we are discussing this, because I truly believe you're wrong. So, you know, and you've heard from other council members, you kind of should, at this point, have a feel for what this council is thinking.
Most certainly.
And, and we are discussing it, I mean, you have, you have eighteen thousand dollars for vans for a frickin' food truck event.
No, I don't, that's not, that's not part of.
I mean, it's right there, it's right there.
That's not part of the eighty thousand that I proposed here, was it?
Well, this says.
That was items.
The sheet that I have here, I presumed, and perhaps was misinformed, added, excuse me, may I finish my, thank you, we've allowed you to talk, so please allow me to finish. You have at the top, remove funds from contractual services, eighty thousand, put funds into the following, and there are all this list, I presumed that was eighty, well, you said it was seventy-four thousand, so I, and you want to put the excess in savings, so that's, am I understanding your sheet correctly? I say yes or no answer.
You are not understanding it correctly.
Okay, tell me where I'm wrong, then.
Because I read, I read the, I read the ones that I would propose to use, the eighty thousand. The, the one that you're talking about is, is not included in the seventy-four thousand that I'm proposing. Those were suggestions by the staff that was given to me when I asked.
Okay, could you tell me which ones again? I obviously missed that when you said it.
Okay, the first one is, I can't get closer to here, so Matt can hear me.
Yeah.
The first one is, under Police Department, when you read, put the funds into the following, Police Department, Fund 509602, Maintenance and Repair, Building and Structures for the Antiquated Review, or Interview Room. The second one in that list is Fund 515671, which is to purchase a 3D scanner that would allow crime and major accident scenes to be documented better, twenty thousand dollars. 507-583, Training of Police Staff That Has Not Been Budgeted For Several Years, ten thousand dollars. And the last one in that, for Police Department in that list, 503523, Small Tools and Equipment, Replace Outdated Cameras and Recorders For The Line Staff, Which Is Nine Thousand Dollars. And then Parks and Recreation, I have the, in the final portion of the seventy-four thousand, is line item 515672, Capital Outlay, Other Machinery and Equipment, for twenty thousand dollars towards a smaller shade structure at Prospector Park. The remaining one, two, three items were also items that were given to me by staff, because I asked for a list, but I didn't want, I, I gave those to us, so that if there was any, any will by the council to do something like this, we would have some choices to make.
I see, and that wasn't indicated on this, and evidently, I presumed that, because it was all listed out here, that that was, I didn't add them up.
I'm sorry, when I was reading it off, I stopped at that point, and, and I'm sorry for that.
Okay, thank you for, for clarifying that, but I still disagree.
Let's keep coming this way, Dave.
If I can clarify a point here that Krista was talking about, it would have been appropriate to agendize this particular item, so that we would have had a chance ahead of time, well, wait a minute, wait a minute, Jeff, it would have been appropriate, just like other items that come to the council, and we just did things in turn, before it was actually listed in the agenda, and then it isn't a surprise, so we know something's coming up about it, maybe the details aren't there, but I think it would have been appropriate, and people would have felt less blindsided, had it been agendized as a particular item tonight for discussion.
Thank you, my words, exactly.
We have an agenda item, it's called the review, and.
Jeff, I get it, I'm not looking for an argument, I'm just.
Well, no, I, I.
I'm just saying, if it would have been agendized.
Let's let Krista respond.
Just, and again, I don't want to argue, I'm not asking a question, I'm, I'm trying to explain to you how it feels, I'm just going to reiterate, I've been cut off three times, this is my last crack at it, just out of a matter of consideration, it would be no different than our city clerk handing us our agenda as we walk into the meeting. I want to crack at things, the, previous to walking into the meeting, that's all, not trying to offend, not asking a question, I'm making a statement, that's it. Please, in the future, a little more consideration, maybe find a way to give it on the agenda so that we can look it over, that's all, I'm not trying to offend, that's all I have to say, I'm not going to argue.
And I'm, and I'm not arguing, but this is part of the process of government, is to have a civil discussion, and the line item in our agenda was to review the city manager's budget, and, I don't know exactly, I don't remember what it says, but part of that process is to review and recommend any changes that we would like to see, since it is our budget. And to, and I, okay, yeah, okay, I blindsided everybody, because I didn't do that, but we have a process to review the budget, and this is part of the agenda item to do that. I, probably has never been done before, maybe I'm wrong.
All right. I haven't commented on it, I, I think constitutionally, Jeff, what you're saying probably makes sense, is it the city's business to be doing this? This is like my tenth budget, because we were given an extra year and a half when they unified the, the elections. And I've been through budgets where staff was just getting let go, right and left, in order to even be able to have a budget, and those were the, those were the worst years ever, when, you know, you used to go upstairs and, and into the other rooms, and there were a lot of cubicles that were filled, and they've been cut and not been replaced, and I think it's great that we still have this little bit of excess that we can spread around, and is it our place to do it? Possibly constitutionally not, but I, I'm glad that we are, we do have enough money that we can do that, so, that's just a, a gut feeling there. Joel and Bryant, where, where do we go from this?
So, this is, this is a philosophical discussion of the role of government, we, I think I can read where council's at, we'll bring forward the, again, the proposed city manager budget, and as we work through this, again, gets reviewed several times per state law, and that we would just come to the next meeting with the, from my perspective, still in the budget, the special contractual services, and unless there's any other direction at that point, but from our end, that's how we, that's how we see it.
And then, when, on the final.
And then when, on the final budget vote, Jeff would, if he chose to, could vote up or down or anyone else? Or make motions to, I approve budget with such and such additions, which could be pretty complicated. We've never had a budget vote like that before with...
Well, probably in the past, um, whoops, that's not on. Broken. Need the budget to fix this microphone. Oh, there we go. No, I think, uh, whoever makes a motion, whoever gets the privilege of making the motion and then there would be a second, but then there could be an amendment, of course. And then that would be voted on also. There's a way to do it, but, um, I mean, I don't, I don't know how anybody's gonna vote on this, but that's one way it could go. It's a policy decision. And I know there might be some feeling that there was a blindside here. However, it is on the budget to talk about any part of the budget. So any portion of the budget could be talked about tonight. And this is, this is a policy, policy decision on it.
And I don't think anyone's arguing that, so...
Right.
And to, to clarify, Mr. Mayor, uh, the tentative budget adoption, it's a public hearing also, so you'll be able to hear from the public. Uh, then the motion will be made by whoever you select to, to make that motion. After the tentative budget's adoption, there's some required, um, publication periods. And then when it comes back for final budget in June, um, you can reduce the budget or maybe change some line items, but you cannot go above, you can't increase the amounts from, the, the total amount from the tentative budget adoption.
Within the funds.
Without funds. I'm sorry.
Within the funds.
It would, yeah, within the funds, yeah. Thank you.
Any, any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor, can I just make you aware of one thing? Your tentative budget is on May fourteenth, a special meeting immediately following. That is your work session at which the Health and Human Services Commission will be presenting their recommendations for next year. And one of the, the sticklers, you may remember from last year, is that, uh, they are required to serve city residents only. And some of them wanted you to change that. And by sticking to it, you are making sure it goes to city residents, so...
Thank you. Anything else, Jeff? Okay, I think we've covered everything we're gonna cover tonight and we'll be adjourned until tomorrow.